All right, good morning. We'll start with a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, you open the prayer.
Heavenly Father, as we come to you once again, we ask that you would guide us in the decisions that we make, help us to make the decisions that would be in the best interest of the community and also in your best interest. Lord, we ask that you would direct us, guide us, and help us as we go through these things. We ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right.
Come here.
You're not allowed to have that pen. No clicking it. I know, that's why. And it's October 16th. We're gonna get started with approving the meeting minutes for... So it says the ninth. Yeah, the ninth. Sorry, my brain stopped there for a second.
That's right.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds...
Any comments or questions on appropriation of funds?
Make a motion. We approve the appropriation.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds regarding sanitary engineer.
Don't have any questions, so I'll make a motion. We approve the request.
And I will say that this whole time I have been vacating the chair a second. There's not another person. Uh, so I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds...
Any comments or questions on the transfers?
Make a motion. We approve the transfer of funds.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts, various funds, moral obligations, and then announced certificates in total amount of $560,515.33.
All right. Any comments or questions on the docket?
I make a motion. We approve the docket.
All right, second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports?
Any comments or questions on miscellaneous?
Make a motion. We accept a report.
All right. A second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request to attend meetings?
Comments, questions, or requests to attend meetings?
Make a motion. We approve the request.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of appointment to the tuberculosis board?
All right, we got a communication dated 10/9/25 from Kathy Whittig, TB clinic nurse, stating that the term for Dr. Michael Martin, M.D., will expire, um, October 2025. And it was requested to approve to extend it to, uh, May of 2026? Is that right? Wait a minute. It was requested and approved at their May 2025 board meeting. Gotcha. That he'd be reappointed for another four years, ending October 2029. Any comments or questions?
Make a motion. We approve the appointment.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of sub-grant agreement between the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and local workforce area one?
Sub-grant agreement between Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and workforce area one for ODJFS. This is a pass-through entity to provide employment training and other supportive services, uh, for youth, ages 14 to 24 with barriers of employment. Um, based upon a comprehensive assessment of these individuals' employment and their training needs... with barriers of employment based upon a comprehensive assessment of these individuals' employment and their training needs. Program is for the... This is a 24 to 25 fiscal biennium that begins July 25 and ends June 30, '27. Any comments or questions?
I'll make a motion we approve the sub grant agreement.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of reappointment to the SOPA board.
All right, we have a letter of request officially expressing interest to be reappointed to the Southern High Port Authority. This is from Ryan Brown, currently serving as the president of SOPA. Kind of stepped in during the middle of a firestorm and has navigated it very well in terms of getting SOPA back up on their feet. I know they're having multiple conversations with potential developers over there. But he's up for a reappointment because he was appointed into a chair that still had a little bit of the term left. So this is for a full-term appointment. Any comments or questions?
I make a motion that we approve the appointment, reappointment.
And I will second, and I appreciate his willingness to continue to right the ship over there and to be involved in the port authority economic development. So thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of terms of engagement between Bricker Grayden and the Board of Sauter County Commissioners.
If you've been following economic development here, a couple weeks ago, we had a group of individuals stand up and say, "Hey, we're willing to reimagine economic development in Sauter County." This is one of those steps. So an entity does not yet exist in terms of a nonprofit economic development corporation similar to what we see across the state. To get that done, though, we do need to have some legal advice. The county is already in agreement with Bricker Grayden on some other economic development items, and this is specifically to help set up the entity and assist with creating bylaws for the new economic development entity, nonprofit. I do want to thank Shawnee State, President Eric Braun, helping fund this part of the engagement to get this up and running and on its feet. Any comments or questions regarding this?
I make a motion we approve the terms of engagement.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of intent to support regarding economic development.
All right, so part of the move to an economic development nonprofit is making sure there's money there to support an executive director. So currently, this board has been funding through county employment, economic development. This intent, so we're not yet shifting money, but we're giving our intent essentially to the rest of the board members of the economic development entity of what our support does look like. It's my recommendation, it's $150,000 that will help pay for the economic development director, any additional training, credentialing, anything there. To put in perspective, currently, the county is paying... $209,000, I think, was paid last year? $209,000, that's not counting anything connected with the building utilities or health insurance. But it is making sure that this entity does have funds because shortly you'll see the selection committee, hiring committee, that I'm not a part of. You know, they're going to be posting for a job, and quite frankly, they need to know how much money they have. So I have asked all of the founding members to at least commit publicly in terms of what they can contribute to this effort, this collaborative effort for the county to reimagine economic development. So, you know, I think $150,000. Quite frankly, Commissioner Smith, that is a dollar amount that was even being floated around at the beginning of the year by the previous commissioner to give that money to SOPA for SOPA to be self-sustaining, with the same idea in mind that it is less money for the county, but it also allows the entity to kind of hire and manage. That's really the future goal here, is to put the authority in the hands of the community versus just in the hands of the commissioners. And I know we've had this conversation a couple times. But this is the financial declaration of what we're willing to help with standing up this entity. Any thoughts, questions?
Just to clarify, we're not giving any money right now. We're just saying this is what we intend to give so that you will have an idea of how much money you have. When did you start looking for someone to hire for this position?
Correct, because as you saw in the previous item, we still have to get the entity stood up. There still has to be banking and everything stood up, bylaws created. But some of this stuff needs to be running in parallel. You know, some of the recruitment and the creation needs to be running in parallel so we get to an endpoint sooner than... I mean, we could be looking at months and months if we kind of separate these things out. So that's a thought process here.
I'll make a motion to approve the intent to support.
All right, and I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Short meeting today, that's all we have. If we have any questions, items on agenda?
I have no questions.
Items off agenda? Wow. We got our treasurer just looking... You're gonna have to start dressing down, sir, if you're gonna come to these meetings. Appreciate you. With that, I guess we'll go to Commissioner Smith. Do you have any closing thoughts or statements?
One thing, today is a fundraising day for Sauter Gives, and it's a great organization. They provide lots of help to other organizations with monetary gifts and grants and also for schools. They provide scholarships for the children. And, you know, it's a great organization. Today's your opportunity, if you want to give, to get with them because they have a really big drive today trying to get all the money in they can. Of course, you could probably give most any time during the year, but today is their big drive. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that and could give if they wish to do that, they can get ahold of them.
Perfect. And today, the big push is because there's some matching dollars, correct?
Yes.
Every dollar you give, there's a match associated with that up to a certain amount. So I'm sure that it's all over their Facebook page right now and on their website. So thank you for bringing that up, because I know, you know, a lot of the activities we talk about every week is driven by these nonprofits. A lot of the improvements we're seeing in our community is driven by these nonprofits. So if you're so inclined, give. I really don't have anything to share today. We are in the election season. We mentioned this last week. I'll mention it again, early voting is open. It is very easy. Just come to the courthouse, go to the Board of Elections. They'll have you in and out. Some important local, local decisions in terms of trustees. There's some levies in different areas. Of course, the school boards, and then, of course, here in the city, you have a couple council members to consider. So get out and vote, exercise your right. You don't have to wait until election day. You can do it now. That's all I have. You're looking at me like you have something else?
No, I have an itch.
Oh, you got an itch? I'll take the itch instead.
Don't do that at an auction.
Yeah, your bid just went up. But with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Thanks so much. Have a great weekend.